Online conferencing application. All city council members and city staff are participating from remote locations. And the meeting will continue as long as there is a forum. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call on every member to make sure you have had an opportunity to ask any questions. At this time, we'll ask our city clerk to do our roll call, please. Jackie, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Mayor Guerero.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
Here.
Counselor Farmer.
Here.
Counselor Henry.
Here.
Counselor Estucci.
Here.
Counselor Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Burisma.
Here.
City Manager Casey.
Here.
City Clerk Rendiria, I am here. Finance Director Alba.
Director Alba will be trying to participate this evening. I don't know if she's unmuted. I do want to let council know that Director Alba had an injury over the weekend and will be out on medical leave for a few weeks recovering. But she is going to try to participate electronically.
Fire Chief Anderson.
I'm here.
Police Chief Escalera.
I'm here.
Public Works Director Fisher.
I'm here.
Perfect. We are all here, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Jackie. And up next, Mr. City Manager, was there any public comments received for today's meeting?
Mr. Mayor, no, there were no written comments received in advance of the meeting.
Thank you. Up next, we have our consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the Minnesota September fourteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting. Approved payroll vouchers numbers one, one, eight, eight, zero, eight through one, one, eight, eight, one, five. And wire transfers was listed for four hundred and six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents for the period ending on September tenth, twenty twenty. Also approved claim vouchers, claim voucher number nine, nine, eight, one, seven through nine, nine, eight, four, one. And wire transfers as listed for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. The period ending on September ninth, twenty twenty. Claim voucher numbers nine, nine, eight, four, two through nine, nine, eight, eight, one. And wire transfers, wire transfers as listed for four hundred and sixteen thousand, ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents with a period ending on September sixteenth, twenty twenty. Claim vouchers numbers nine, nine, eight, eight, two through nine, 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 one, two. And wire transfers as listed for two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents with a period ending on September twenty-third, twenty twenty. Our city clerk mentioned that there was a typo that she was able to cash. And when we do our motion, we'll just request to get that typo corrected. It believes under the financial piece that Ms. Alba was covering. Was as a layering instead of a learning. So we'll just make that adjustment here when we make the motion to approve or debate this item. So we'll start with our Counselor Farmer. Any questions or comments on this session?
No.
Counselor Estucci.
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Burisma.
No, sir.
Counselor Hicks.
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
No questions.
Counselor Henry.
No questions, sir.
Okay. Right, so there's no questions on this item. What is the desire of council?
I would move to approve the consent agenda with the typo, of course, is Counselor Henry.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Henry, seconded by Counsel Hicks to approve the consent agenda as presented with the adjustment to the minutes. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, you know, debate. Ms. Clerk, do your roll call, please.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Estucci.
Yes.
Counselor Burisma.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yeah.
Mayor Guerero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
Yes.
Counselor Henry.
Yes.
Perfect, Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes, so we'll move on to our next item, which is going to be our active agenda. And first up, we have our amended inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce. Consider authorize the city manager to sign and execute the inter-agency amendment agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce for the Coronavirus Relief Fund for local governments. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is an amendment on the inter-agency agreement that the city council adopted or approved and entered into earlier this year between the city and the Department of Commerce for the Coronavirus Cares Act relief funds. The original contract was based on a allotment system set out by the state under the federal law. And the original allocation granted to the city of Sunnyside under that first contract was just over five hundred thousand dollars. It's a reimbursement basis, meaning that as the city incurred expenses necessary to support operations or respond to the coronavirus pandemic emergency, we could then seek reimbursement from the state through this program for those expenses. Recently, the state expanded that program. Adjusted funding that they'd gotten from the federal government and extended the duration of the program so that the full amount, excuse me, the expansion of the grant was by just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And the new deadline for submission of our reimbursements has been extended from October to November thirtieth. And so Department of Commerce published a contract amendment for us to bring to you for consideration in order to accept that expansion of the program. I understand from the city clerk that for some reason, the format that we got the contract document from Commerce did not upload successfully into Prime Gov. Apologize for that. But essentially, it is a pretty straightforward amendment, just extending the timeline and the total amount. I think Director Alba is on the call as well, so if there's any questions, either she or I should be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We'll go down our list and see if there's any questions or comments on this item. And we'll start with our Counselor Henry.
No questions at this time.
Counselor Burisma.
Just a question, have we already applied for this? Or is this a new application that we're submitting for this new amount?
So we already entered into an agreement for this, to participate, excuse me, to participate in this program. So what the state did is, after the initial agreement and allotments were established, the state decided to expand the program and extend the duration of it. So they've provided an additional two hundred and fifty-six thousand in allocation to the city. We simply need to amend the contract to accept that expanded allocation and duration. Wasn't anything we had to apply for. In terms of actually getting the money, the reimbursement, Director Alba each month submits a detailed form to the Department of Commerce showing all of our reimbursable expenses, whether it's salaries or equipment purchases or other modifications to, you know, to respond, like purchasing protective equipment. We submit those to Commerce for reimbursement, I believe, to date. In the first round, we received back already reimbursement of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars and some change, it's rounded. And in the most recent submission, which was put in for, we're asking for another thirty thousand in reimbursement. So each month, we submit this reimbursement under it. Does that answer the question?
It does, thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Estucci.
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Hicks.
No questions.
Counselor Farmer.
No questions.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
No questions.
Okay, so if you notice no questions, what is the desire of council on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, I heard that the same time, two individuals who wants to take this one.
Give it to Mr. Burisma.
Thank you. A motion by Deputy Mayor Stremler, seconded by Councilmember Burisma to amend the inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce. Consider authorize the city manager to sign and execute the inter-agency amendment agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, or local governments. Is there any debate on this item? Thank you, no debate. The city clerk will now start the roll call.
Counselor Henry.
Hi.
Mayor Guerero.
Yes.
Counselor Burisma.
Yes.
Counselor Estucci.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yeah.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you, motion passes. Up next, we have our Cares Act Small Business Assistance Program. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and manage the agreement between Y C D A and the city of Sunset for Cares Act funding distribution for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This follows on the action that you just completed. As was shared a moment ago, the city had originally received approximately five hundred thousand dollars in potential reimbursable funds under the Cares Act through this particular program administered by the Department of Commerce. To date, we have applied for and received reimbursement of expenses totaling just over three hundred thousand dollars. That's in the first six months of reimbursements. There are still just three months left under the program, September, October, and November to submit for. And we would still have approximately two hundred thousand dollars of that original allocation to support us through those three months. However, with the expansion of the program, the city is now receiving, would be eligible to receive, an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as we explored what our likely expenditures are going to be and our spending pattern, and the finance team analyzed kind of our capacity, one of the eligible expenses that we had not yet been able to take advantage of is that under the Cares Act, cities may use these funds to reimburse direct grants to businesses that have been adversely affected by the coronavirus pandemic emergency. This is a step that some cities have begun taking in September, starting somewhat, some in late August, I think, with the city of Yakima. And it has been a way for these funds to help close some of the gaps that particularly for the small business community have been difficult to fill. Many of the other federal stimulus programs tended to be earmarked for larger businesses, for businesses with significant payrolls or for businesses that had deep banking relationships. And many smaller businesses have not either qualified or been successful in competing for some of those federal stimulus funds. What the county of Yakima and then the city of Yakima and now some of our other cities in the valley have been looking at is taking some of their Cares Act funds and purposing them towards direct grants to small businesses. These would not need to be repaid by the businesses. And this is a fully reimbursable expense under the Cares Act administered by the Department of Commerce. I will say that joining me on the call tonight, I'd invited Jonathan Smith, who's the director of the Yakima County Development Association, which is a Commerce-designated economic development agency and as such, has been selected by most of the cities in the valley who are choosing to take this step to administer the program. They are actually being funded by the county directly to help administer these programs so that very little of the grant funds to businesses are being used for administration at all. And there's a lot of detail in this cover sheet, I realize that. But it's, you know, fairly, working with these kinds of programs, it's a fairly complicated, complex set of variables to do this. But I would point out that there are a couple of things that we'll be seeking council's input on tonight. There are some areas where if the council chooses to move forward with this program to sunny side small businesses, we do have some discretion. For example, we have some discretion over how large a business, what the maximum size, number of employees to target the program to. Some cities have capped the size of business at twenty employees, including the other, including the owner. Some others have gone smaller, even as small as only five employees to really direct the funds to their smallest struggling businesses. The other area of discretion that we'll be seeking council's input on is how large a cap to set on individual grants. The largest camp I'm aware of in the valley is for maximum award of ten thousand dollars for one business. That. And in comparison, we're also aware of some cities that have capped their awards at about five thousand dollars per business. If we set aside the two hundred and fifty thousand that we're recommending from the new expansion of the program, if we set aside two hundred and fifty thousand and capped each award at ten thousand dollars, then we could expect potentially twenty-five sunny side businesses to receive funds through the program. However, if we capped at five thousand, then we might be able to get some funds into the hands of fifty small businesses. And those are rough numbers because businesses apply for an amount that they feel they need based on, you know, their expenses and so forth. They may be trying to cover a lease payment or a utility payment or vendor reimbursement or something like that. Some businesses have applied under this grant program in other cities for as little as three or four or five hundred dollars, whatever they need in order to kind of help make sure they get through this. But those are some of the options. And I think I'll stop there and invite council to ask questions of either me or Jonathan Smith if you do about the proposal that we're presenting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And we'll start with Counselor Estucci. Questions, comments, and also if you lean towards a lower amount or the higher amount. And as far as capping the employees, what do you feel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of lean toward the lower amount so we can help more people. I know there's a magic number where if we go too far, then we're not helping enough. Or the help that we're giving is not helping enough. So I think five thousand is a good number. And I would cap at, you know, twenty employees, maybe, or maybe ten employees. I don't know, I'll listen to my colleagues here.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have Deputy Mayor Stremler.
Deputy Mayor. No questions or comments at this time.
Deputy Mayor, do you feel dollar amount is warranted from, for the amount and a cap on employees? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Counselor Farmer.
I would, I would like to see the cap at five thousand. Maybe, maybe twenty employees. I do have a couple of other questions, though. And I read through this a couple of times, maybe I missed it. And then you kind of talked about it a little bit earlier. Yakima County is footing the bill for the Y C D A to run this program? Or are we going to have to kick in some money to run the program also?
Thank you for that point. The initial deployment of this program, the Yakima County Commissioners dedicated, I think, approximately fifty thousand dollars of their funds to support Y C D A in its administration of these grant programs. That funding is nearing its end. And we understand that the county commissioners are considering a second appropriation to continue supporting that. So, and I don't know, Mr. Smith, if you have any update on that? But that, I think, was where the status was as of the end of last week. Not sure.
Right now, we don't anticipate needing any additional dollars to administer the grant programs as proposed. If we wanted to get more granular in terms of, you know, vetting requirements and those kinds of things, we may need additional staff time to do that. But as proposed here, I think that we're in good shape and we should be able to do this. And the city of Sunnyside already contributes dollars to our organization. And by and large, this year, all we've been doing, most of our time has been spent working with businesses on this. And so those funds that we're already receiving from the city would be directed towards this.
Okay, thank you. Now, the other question that I have, and I forget the name of the program, but I'm going to say it was the PPP program that went through the Small Business Administration. If people got funding from that, are they eligible for funding for this, from this?
They may be. The way these programs work is they have a cumulative value. So I'll ask Jackie to scroll up just a little further on the, whoops, sorry, scroll down, I apologize. I was thinking a little further down to the bottom of that section. There we go. If a business has already received other Cares Act funds, we have to count those funds towards the total award. And I'll ask Jonathan to clarify whether the Payroll Protection Program, the PPP program counted as a Cares Act fund. I believe it was part of that legislation, but I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Yeah, so the city of Grandview didn't count paycheck protection or economic injury disaster loan in theirs. City of Yakima did, though, to ensure that dollars would go to businesses that haven't been able to access any other kind of financial assistance, but still meet all of the terms. So that's, city of Grandview, however, did say if, you know, you got a grant from the county program that Y C D A administered up to five thousand, then you've gotten your five thousand. And we'll use this five thousand for another business that didn't. So the, but, but manager Casey is correct that the Paycheck Protection Program is cares dollars as well.
So are we saying we're eligible, a small business would be eligible or not then? Because some of the PPP money could also be used for rent and other things like that. So i- is it or isn't it?
So, Counselor, that's, that's an area where some of the cities have exercised some discretion. Yakima chose to count those cares dollars, if I heard Jonathan correctly, count those other P P E dollars towards their awards so that they were ensuring that the dollars they were distributing got to businesses that hadn't gotten any other support. They were trying to fill gaps for businesses that had not gotten any other federal support. Grandview, on the other hand, said that they would award funds to businesses that had gotten P P E dollars, I think. Or did I get, did I get that correct, Jonathan? So it's, that would be a matter for council. Most cities, as I understand it, are following the model of trying to get, focusing their funds on businesses that have not yet received any other federal aid. But if council wishes to go a different direction, that seems to be permissible under the program.
Okay, and then I think this would be my last question. In the case of maybe like a beauty shop where they have a license for their shop, but each individual beautician is basically on their own, are these individual people, would they qualify for this type of funding?
Jonathan, I believe they would.
Yeah, so for instance, in the Yakima program that we're doing right now, we ran a map of all the addresses that have come in so far and noticed that there was three or four applications for the same address. And it was a salon or a beautician place. And there were applications, just like what you had said. There was a person who actually owned the business and owned the building. And then four people who were renting chairs there for a thousand dollars a month or whatever it was to. And so each of those that are sole proprietors renting the chair comply as well.
The threshold we're looking at is, are they an individually licensed business? And in many salons, you're absolutely right. The individual stylists or barbers, maybe they're essentially independent businesses. They just happen to lease a chair space, a workstation in that larger salon.
So they would be eligible then?
Correct.
All right. Those are my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Henry.
I would like to see the cap at about seventy-five hundred because I feel like five thousand just is just not quite enough. And ten thousand is a little, a little too much. We could help a little bit more. And I'd like to see the employee right around fifteen with our area. I think that would be the right number for employees. And that's what I got.
Thank you, Counselor Burisma.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to say that as far as my preferences go, excuse me, I kind of like that five thousand dollar number simply because I want to be able to help as many business owners as possible. Employees, I guess I'd like to see them somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen or even ten or fewer. I do have one question, and that is this. Are we making sure that these are businesses that have a business license in Sunnyside? Or is it just a state business license that's required? What are we looking for with them?
So as part of the review process that Y C D A conducts, they check for a city of Sunnyside business license. And I'm going to try to go through and find this quickly in the document. In the contract, that is one of the special conditions in paragraph, or section four. Applicants must provide proof of a valid city of Sunnyside. They must be licensed in the city and have been in business at least one year prior. That's been pretty standard in almost all the city programs. They have to certify with Y C D A. This is part of Commerce's requirements. They have to certify with Y C D A that they will only use the dollars for eligible expenses. And so, yes, those are, those, as Jonathan Smith explained, the documentation that we're, that we or that Y C D A is required to maintain, vet those business eligibility requirements. But they're, they're pretty straightforward. There are other programs that are far more complicated in the level of documentation and financial records and statements that the applicants are required to provide. And we're trying, you know, most of the cities are trying to keep this one fairly low barrier.
Thank you.
So we. Counselor Hicks.
Sorry.
Counselor, any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to give the lower amount of a thousand, sounds about right, and up to fifteen employees. I think that would cover bases pretty well in town here.
Thank you. And last but not least, me myself. And it looks like most customers are commenting on the amount. We got about four different five thousand levels. And as far as the employees, there seems we've got a couple of votes for fifteen, one for twenty, one for ten. So it seems like fifteen seems to be the number that it's, it's in between the high and the low. And they got a couple of votes, so. Counselor, unless there's objection, we could move with that five K limit. I guess we'll make the motion. We tried that, five K seems to be the number that we're agreeing on and about fifteen employees. So that's kind of where I'm landing on this as well. And counsel, what is the desire of council on this item?
I'd make the motion to approve with the five thousand and the fifteen employee cap. This is Counsel Henry.
I'll second, this is Counselor Estucci.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Henry, seconded by Counselor Estucci to approve to Cares Act Small Business Assistance Program. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the manager to execute and manage the agreement between Y C D A and the city of Sunset for Cares Act funding distribution for two hundred and fifty thousand. Is there any debate on this item?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Farmer. But one of the questions I ask are whether we're going to count the federal. But one of the questions I ask are whether we're going to count the federal CARES money against the money that we're going to do here. Are we, are we going to allow that in or are we, are we not? And then I also, one other little thing just popped in my mind here. How do we determine whether a business needs it? Are we going to go in? Or is YCD going to go in and look at their sales tax returns to see if their business in fact has declined or has it maintained what it was in previous months or previous years? That was another question that just popped into my mind. So, so are we going to be giving the money to the people who have lost sales? And sales tax, you know, I mean, we can do that by sales tax revenue.
So part of the scoring that YCD does considers whether the businesses have been closed or allowed to remain partly open under the governor's executive order. If they've been closed down entirely, they get a higher score than if they've been partly closed or if they've been allowed to operate. They also take into consideration the business's self-reported percentage of lost income or the number of employees that they've had to release or terminate or lay off as a result of it. Jonathan, I don't know if you want to speak to some of this. It's, as we said, it's, there's been remarkable altruism, I guess is the word I would say, demonstrated by the business community in this program. Jonathan shared with us recently an example of a business that had applied and qualified for a grant award and then turned it down after they had been able to reopen partly in the most recent modification of the phases. And they were seeing some revenue come in. And they turned down the grant because they wanted to make sure that businesses that were even in worse need than they are were able to access some of these funds. In terms of counting the federal against that, as I mentioned, that's something up to council's discretion, and we're open to the direction of council on that.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the motion to include businesses who receive some of the PPP money also be allowed to apply for this grant also.
I'll second that amendment.
Could Jackie still help me out with this? Do we have to vote on the first motion and then do the amendment, or we do both at the same time?
The amendment modifies the main motion. So you have to vote on the amendment first, and then it modifies the main motion. So when you bring the motion before the body, it's, the motion is as amended.
As amended, gotcha. Thank you. Okay, is there an additional debate on this item?
Are we talking about on the amended motion? Are we talking about debate on the original?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
On the amendment.
Mr. Mayor, what you'd want to say is, this is on the question of the amendment so that people understand that you're modifying the main motion.
That's what we're debating. Thank you for that clarification. So councillor Brozma, yes, it sounds like we are debating that actual amendment at this point.
And I have no questions.
Council members, any additional questions, comments on the amendment itself? Correct.
Count on their cap of the other man, or the other grant?
As I understood it, and this, I opened a clarification, but as I understood it, the motion was not to count other grants or federal aid that the business had received against the grant that we would be making. So if somebody had received $3,000, say, through the Payroll Protection Program, we wouldn't count that against the total amount they would be eligible under our program.
Right, they would just lower their score then, right?
It, it might if, as a result of that, they had not had to lay anybody off. If they were able to retain employees during that time, they might get a slightly lower score on, on that factor. But it, it wouldn't preclude them from getting funding.
Okay, that cleared it up for me. Thanks.
Council, just a question or comments? Okay, here none. Jackie, could you roll call please for us?
Yes. Councillor Stucci?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Councillor Farmer?
Yes.
Councillor Henry?
Yeah.
Councillor Brozma?
Yes.
Councillor Higgs?
Yeah.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you, council, so the motion passes. And we'll move on to our next agenda item.
Uh, no, sir. Actually be,
Yeah.
The amendment?
I got it, Mr. City Manager. Yeah, we, we've just voted on the amendment, sir. So now the main motion is before us, and it is amended.
Okay, so now we vote on the actual amended motion, so thank you.
Correct, and you'll want to ask debate on this because someone may want to enter another motion to amend.
Right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and I'll just restate the motion as amended. Well, CARES Act Small Business Assistance Program. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and manage the agreement between YCD and the city of Sunset for CARES Act funding distribution for 23,000. And we're capping it at 5,000 with 15 employees. And we're not taking into account any other PPP grant money that they had received. Is there any debate on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So something just popped into my mind. City manager talked about the altruism of some businesses, but I know that human nature being what it is, there's also a tendency to go the other direction. Is there any kind of protection for, let's say, certain businesses need a business license in many communities? And if these businesses apply for this type of grant in more than one community, is there any way of making sure that they're not taking advantage of this program unfairly?
The way it's set up is if they are licensed to do business in our community and can demonstrate that in, in our community, then they would be eligible. I would ask Jonathan if that has come up as an issue in any of the other cities for which YCD has been administering this? Have we seen businesses in multiple jurisdictions or the same business applying in multiple jurisdictions? Because they do business in multiple jurisdictions?
Only if they have a separate location. So so far, we haven't seen like a home-based business, like someone who does contracting or a truck driver that maybe drives in Sunnyside and Yakima and somewhere else. But they're based out of their home. We haven't seen someone like that apply in multiple cities. But I think there's a famous burgers in Topenish, and there's also one in Yakima. And they're both owned by the same couple. And they applied once for Yakima, but it's its own restaurant there. And they applied once for Topenish, which is its own restaurant. So that's the only time we've seen applicants apply twice is for different locations.
So then the only way that they would be able to apply twice is they'd have to have multiple locations, one in each of the jurisdictions in which they apply, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional debate on this item, council? Here, we now, city clerk will now start the roll call ball. Jackie, I think you're muted.
Sorry, I have to find the button here. I'm going to have to get a different microphone. Okay, councillor Stucci?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Councillor Farmer?
Yes.
Councillor Henry?
Yeah.
Councillor Brozma?
Yes.
Councillor Higgs?
Yeah.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have our COVID-19 Emergency Declaration Extension. Consider adopting a resolution extending the proclamation of emergency and adopting findings of fact and procedures for managing the COVID-19 public health emergency. Mr. City Manager.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is simply an extension of the existing emergency declaration and resolution that allows for adjustment of city operations and services consistent with the phased reopening of the state under the governor's and the county health district's orders. It's enabling us to kind of remain both in compliance with and adapt to those directives as they, as, as they change. I, we made no, there were no substantive alterations or changes from the, other than just updating the dates and, and some of the phrasings. I think in the last resolution, it had just come out with the modified Phase 1. And there was some confusion as to whether they were calling it a modified Phase 1 or a Phase 1.5 in Yakima County. And since then, the language has kind of standardized on a modified Phase 1. So we did clean that up in the resolution. Otherwise, all of the provisions are the same as in the one that you last adopted at the end of July. We have to answer the questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and we'll start with councillor Brozma.
I have no questions, sir.
Councillor Henry?
No questions.
Councillor Stucci?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Higgs? Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No questions.
Councillor Farmer?
No questions.
Okay, here are no questions. Well, what is the desire of council on this item?
I'd move to approve. Councillor Henry?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by council member Henry, second by council member Higgs to approve the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration Extension. Consider adopting a resolution extending the proclamation of emergency and adopting findings of fact and procedures for managing a COVID-19 public health emergency. Is there any debate on this item? You have no debate. The city clerk will now start the roll call ball, please.
Councillor Brozma?
Yes.
Councillor Henry?
Yes.
Councillor Stucci?
Yes.
Councillor Higgs?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Councillor Farmer? Councillor Farmer?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Up next, we have our Public Participation Plan for Comprehensive Plan Update. Consider approving a resolution adopting the Public Participation Plan for the city of Sunnyside Comprehensive Plan Evaluation and the Update, and the Update Project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The council is aware that the city has begun the process of updating and reviewing our comprehensive plan, which is required on a periodic basis under the Growth Management Act. As one of the required components of that plan, planning officials and staff have to commit to how will we engage the public in, and in providing input and feedback on the draft plan elements as they go forward? So the first things that's adopted is a public participation plan that outlines how that will occur. Our planning supervisor, Mike Shuttleworth, came on board in beginning of summer, has worked with the Planning Commission on this proposal or this proposed outline. They deliberated in particular on how to provide meaningful opportunities for input during the COVID-19 pandemic by making sure that virtual and electronic methods were included in the plan. Planning Commission reviewed and recommended the plan in August. And then we brought that to you for discussion on your September 8th workshop. There were no changes requested at that time, and so it's been placed on our agenda for action this evening. And planning supervisor Mike Shuttleworth, I believe, is still on the call. I, I lost track of, I think he's over there still. He was on the call earlier, but otherwise happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
We'll start with councillor Farmer. Questions or comments?
None at this time.
Councillor Higgs?
No questions.
Councillor Stucci?
No questions, just a simple comment. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for the work that they've done so far on this. This is a very long process, and so I appreciate all the work that they're doing to get us ready for this.
Thank you. Councillor Henry?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Councillor Brozma?
No questions or comments. I just agree with Mr. Stucci's comments here.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No questions.
Thank you. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
Motion by councillor Stucci, second by councillor Brozma to adopt the Public Participation Plan for Comprehensive Plan, Plan Update. Consider approving a resolution adopting the Public Participation Plan for the city of Sunnyside Comprehensive Plan Evaluation and the Update Project. Is there any debate on this item? Okay, here are no debate. The city clerk will now start the roll call ball, please.
Councillor Farmer?
Yes.
Councillor Higgs?
Yeah.
Councillor Stucci?
Yes.
Councillor Henry?
Yeah.
Councillor Brozma?
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to our next item, which is going to be an ME, which is the final plat for Cherrywood Hill subdivision. Consider approving the Cherrywood Hill's final plat and adopt that resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the final plat. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very pleased to bring this forward. This will be a strong addition to Sunnyside. We received, the city received this original plat application in 2018. This is to create 20, excuse me, 37 lots on a nearly nine-acre parcel off of Swan Road, the western edge of the city. In 2018, the Planning Commission considered the preliminary plat and then recommended approval to the city council. The council considered that preliminary plat and approved it in 2018. Mr. Martin has since completed the engineering design for the proposed plat and completed some minor adjustments and improvements. He's changed the name of the plant from Swan Ridge to Cherrywood Hill. And he has combined some lots so that we're actually doing 28 residential lots on the roughly nine acres. The final plat submission has been fully reviewed by the planning staff. It's in, in, in great shape. And so, planning staff and I have signed off on it, and we're recommending approval now by the city council. And again, planning supervisor Mike Farmer is on the call if council has any technical questions. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Henry, questions or comments on this item?
Sorry, no comments.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No comments, no questions.
Councillor Farmer?
No comments, no questions.
Councillor Brozma?
Oh, let's get this project moving.
Councillor Higgs?
No, how much questions?
Councillor Stucci?
I agree with Mr. Brozma. Let's get it moving.
Thank you. Okay. So there have been no questions. What is the desire of council on this item?
Would move to approve. This is councillor Henry.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by customer Henry, second by customer Brozma to consider proving that Cherrywood Hill final plat and adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the final plat. Is there any debate on this item? You have no debate. The city clerk will now start the roll call ball, please.
Mayor Guerrero?
Yes.
Councillor Henry?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Councillor Farmer?
Yes.
Councillor Brozma?
Yes.
Councillor Higgs?
Yeah.
Councillor Stucci?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Up next, we have our fire slash EMS engine purchase. Consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate the purchase of a 2012 Pierce Velocity Rescue Engine from S.G. Wilson Truck Equipment, up to $229,000, not including sales tax. Mr. City Manager.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Pleased to be able to bring this opportunity to council's attention and consideration. Council is aware that our ability and past funding of equipment rental and replacement funding has, has been a little challenged. Last year, the fire department brought forward the fact that one of our engines is aging and and not really helping us with our insurance ratings and so forth. And so even though we did not have the funds, did not anticipate having the funds in the budget at the time we adopted the 2020 budget, council and I continue to support the city, or excuse me, the fire chief, in trying to explore opportunities to potentially replace this aging fire engine. Something that had, or an option that had come to the fire chief's attention is that there are a few manufacturers that actually build rigs that are combined fire engine and have an EMS box on them as well. So they function in both capacities, and actually, the city clerk has just put up an image of that. However, they are, because they are so specialized, they tend to be quite expensive new, in excess of $800,000 before taxes and final prep. And so it was not an option that we thought was likely to be available to us until a few weeks ago when we were made aware of an engine that was provided, or was put on the market because of consolidation of fire districts down in Oregon. As they consolidated, they looked at their inventory, and this was a unit that was deemed not necessary for their services and combined operations. It was fairly new. It, as I mentioned, is from 2012. It had been in active service for only a handful of years and then had not been utilized much and had then been refurbished and updated right before putting on sale for market. Nevertheless, there was the old adage, don't look a gift horse in the mouth. So we dared to do that. We actually sent a team down to Oregon to check it out for ourselves and confirm the maintenance history, confirm the condition of the vehicle, confirm the mechanics, and the utility of it for our needs. And they came back with a very positive report and recommendation. So given that we had identified this potential opportunity, the next step was for the fire chief and finance director to collaborate on whether we could figure out how to finance it within our existing resources. And one of the things that we're very pleased to have seen is that in the last couple of years, Chief Anderson had gotten the fire department involved in a particular federal program, and I'm going to glance down here so I've got the acronym right, the Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program, which has helped us recover funds used in federal healthcare subsidized medical transports. And so that has brought additional revenue into the ambulance program. Beyond what originally was anticipated, so that's been very fortunate. And through a combination of those funds and some other steps that I'll let the finance folks talk about in more detail, we do believe we have a viable strategy for being able to pay for this in the current fund balances for the emergency medical ambulance utility and for the fire department's portion of the general fund. I will let you know that Chief Anderson presented me with a binder approximately an inch thick of all the background data and mechanical and maintenance records and so forth. There was very thorough research on this. Since returned it to him, so he has it for his reference. But we'd be very pleased to answer any questions from council and recommend this to your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and we'll start with our Counselor Hicks. Questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, Chief, is this the one to replace the 40-year-old engine we have now?
Yeah, this is Chief Anderson. Yes, this is, our plan is to replace Engine 12, which is the 1982 era. It's failed its pump test the last few years, and it's been sitting out of service. So the goal is to replace this, and then that'll give us an opportunity to probably in-house overhaul Engine 11 sometime this winter. So we'll, the city will then have three engines that are functional, and that all contribute towards our fire rating.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Borzma?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I know that the city's fire rating has been not looking fantastic over the last couple of years and was projected to not look so good for the next couple of years. The other thing that I want to comment on is at least one of the engines that we have sitting out in the weeds is somewhat unsafe, as I talked to some of our volunteers, to where it can jump into gear or not be in gear when we think it is. And that's not good for our firefighters, whether they're volunteer or staff. My personal opinion, I think we'd be nuts to pass this up. It's a fantastic opportunity. So that's kind of where I'm falling on this.
Okay, Counselor Henry?
I would just like to thank Chief and the staff that went and checked everything out. And I believe this is a good for our city, so I'm total favor for it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stremler?
I want to thank the chief and the staff also for all the work they've done on this. And I'd like to just make one comment. With a small city like we have, we have a tendency of aging out our fire equipment long before it's worn out. So I think a used piece of equipment that's not really that old would be an excellent addition to our equipment line at this price especially. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Restucci?
A question for the chief and then a comment, Mr. Mayor. Chief, on this rig, have you purchased, are you going to purchase new ladders and new hose for it?
Yeah, well, we have quite a bit of large diameter hose that we'll take off of Engine 12. Eventually, over time, like I said, we're going to transfer as much of the stuff off of 12 that we can. There's still going to be some tools and whatnot that we're going to have to purchase as funds become available. But yeah, the goal is to completely outfit three full engines that way.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to know that, because I know that's an additional cost, correct?
That is, yes.
Okay. And then just the comments that my colleagues have shared, appreciate the work you did, chief, and the staff on this. This is a no-brainer. I mean, this vehicle costs $700,000, $800,000 new. Still got five years left on its warranty, and what are we paying for it total, chief? Two something?
With taxes, we built in, we estimated $15,000 to get it lettered and new radios for it, because those were taken out. This apparatus was sent back to Pierce Manufacturing, and they, because it was made in 2012, the NFPA standards changed in 2016. So it was in service from 2013 to 2016 in Newburgh, Oregon, until it was taken out of service when Toowallton Valley Fire Rescue annexed Newburgh. It sat, it then sat inside, stored inside from 2016 until 2019 when it was sent to the liquidator. The liquidators then sent it to Pierce Manufacturing to bring it up to current NFPA 1901 and 1911 standards. It does have a valid pump test, but that expires in about a month. And, but yeah, other than that, it's in total, just to get the radios and lettering and tax included, I think we're looking at $262,000 and some change.
Thank you. Yeah, the purchase price is approximately $230,000, and then the other elements that he discussed, those are at another 30.
Well, I wholeheartedly support this. Congratulations on, you know, being hot on an item like this, chief. Finding this is probably, I imagine there were a lot of other departments that would have liked to get their hands on this rig.
Yeah, I think so too. It's a great opportunity, in my opinion. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Farmer?
I too would like to compliment the chief on this. You know, probably one of the good things that I can see that helps the city a whole bunch is some of this money is coming out of our EMS. And I think that makes it a lot easier for me to want to purchase the truck when we can get some EMS help on it also. I think that this truck is needed. I think it'll be a good purchase for the city. I think that, I think this is just win-win. And again, I would support it, and I would thank the chief for his hard work and the department's hard work and finding us something that we can use as good as this. Thank you.
City Manager, I just have one question. I did see that we were going to do a portion out of our general fund, and we have not basically allocated none of those funds savings from the pool. So we are basically allocating it for the purchase of this vehicle. So without being said, was, are we going to be okay financially taking that big of a hit on our general fund for this vehicle purchase?
In looking at where the general fund is at this point, the finance director felt pretty confident. There's, we've been able to come in well within the budget that council had set aside for the pool improvements. Just to remind council, when we made the difficult decision to not open the pool this summer because of the COVID-19 pandemic, there had been just a little over $100,000 already designated in the approved 2020 budget for pool operations, for our normal pool operations. Roughly half of that was then held for performing the upgrades and improvements that are nearly completed on the pool. And the remainder was just simply held in the general fund against, you know, possible fund depletion or if we had a worse hit to our revenue. Right now, the fund is pretty stable, and we're pretty confident that we can take that pool money from this year, apply it to this purchase, and still come out in the black at the end of the year.
Thank you. Okay, what is the desire of council on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Motion to approve. Counselor Farmer, do you have a question?
Well, I just got a comment, and I forgot to bring it up, and I apologize for this. When I was looking over the financials of this, I did not see where you factored in the amount of sales tax we're going to get back. And I think, and I think that needs, that, you know, they're going to collect sales tax, and that sales tax is going to come back to Sunnyside, I'm sure. And we're going to get a portion of that sales tax back for our own use. So that's just, that's just another plus, in my opinion.
Yes, and I, if I, and I'll invite the director to speak to this, but as I understood it, the line item around sales tax return of 1.5% since sales tax remits to the general fund, the credit for the tax would go towards the general fund portion of the credit. But I'll ask Elizabeth if that's in, if she's feeling up to it, if that's in fact where I'm reading that right.
Yes, that is correct. Jackie, could you go down to the worksheet that I created?
There we are, right there.
Right there is the credit for the sales tax return of $3,435 to the general fund.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I really appreciate the fact that we had this fun analysis, because it does give us a clear picture of where the funds are coming from and where we're going to be out financially. So I do appreciate the hard work being put into this analysis, so thank you for doing that. Okay, council, I know I had a motion earlier. I just didn't quite catch who it was. Well, who would like to make a motion on this item?
Deputy Mayor Stremler made the motion a bit ago.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Deputy Mayor Stremler, second by Councilor Restucci, to consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate the purchase of a 2012 Pierce Velocity Rescue Engine from S.G. Wilson Truck Equipment, of up to $229,000, not including sales tax. Is there any debate on this item? There are no debate. The city clerk will now start the roll call, please.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Counselor Borzma?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Gareto?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Restucci?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to our next item. It's going to be the 2020 Budget Amendment Number Three. Consider adopting an ordinance amending the 2020 budget. Mr. City Manager?
Okay, this is the budget amendment that corresponds to the action council just took. This would implement those financial adjustments that were outlined in the financial worksheet, the director, just the funding analysis that Director Albert just showed you. So this just simply brings the budget into alignment with your previous action to waive the competitive purchase rules and move forward with the purchase of the fire engine.
Okay, we'll go down the list and council members for questions or comments. Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No questions.
Counselor Hicks?
No questions.
Counselor Restucci?
No questions.
Counselor Borzma?
No questions, sir.
Counselor Farmer?
No questions.
Counselor Henry?
No questions.
No questions for me either. It missed the, let me see what we got. What is the desire of council on this item?
Moved to approve.
I second it.
Okay, motion by Councilor Hicks, second by Deputy Mayor Stremler, to consider adopting the, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget. Is there any debate on this item? There are no debate. The city clerk will now start the roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Counselor Restucci?
Yes.
Counselor Borzma?
Yes.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Gareto?
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Mayor, can I just clarify something? Deputy Mayor, your motion for the last item was to approve the resolution, correct? For the purchase of the fire engine?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so up next, we have items from council members. Council request status report. Mr. City Manager?
All right. Give Jackie a moment to have the system catch up with us there. So I'm hoping this may work a little more effectively for council. Met with the members of the leadership team last week and with the city clerk, and we went ahead and made sure we had updates ready for this meeting on each of the items in the council request status report, so that we're not trying to answer questions kind of on the fly. And so our hope is that by doing this kind of steadily and ahead of each meeting, it will save time and provide more clear information to council. So with regard to the disabled parking area at the senior center, I think we've shared verbally with council, although we hadn't noted it here, the engineer's estimate for those improvements came in last year at about $80,000, $85,000. In response to the lack of available grant funding this year, I've asked Public Works Director to explore the potential use of our REIT funds. REIT is a mechanism that we can use for capital improvements. It's funding that the city has not chosen to use in the last couple of years to try to build up those funds for potential major improvements or capital needs. But it may be an option that we could take advantage that would not affect our general fund and not rely on grants that right now aren't available. So we're researching that and hope to be able to come back to council later this year with a recommendation. If approved, it's most likely construction. We want to do that during the better construction window early next year, but in order to queue that up, we want to get ready for that here in, over the winter. On the tree replacement plan, we're pleased to report, we can scroll down, that trees to replace the infested ash trees that had to be removed last year infested ash trees that had to be removed last year along YVH, trees were ordered on September 22nd. They will be picked up this week and community will see staff working to install those trees along the Yakima Valley Highway uh over the next several weeks. Um, they have to prep the ground. They have to uh bring in some soil to, you know, provide a suitable uh rooting area. Uh, they're going to be double checking the irrigation, but um we will, we will see those ashtrays. Uh, ash trees, excuse me, not ashtrays, ash trees replaced uh before winter and hopefully next spring they'll bud out and bring a little uh greenery and and uh beauty back to that stretch of Yakima Valley Highway. On small cell five G, uh, council previously uh directed the planning commission to take this under uh consideration and the planning supervisor is preparing for briefing to the planning commission on this topic at their next upcoming meeting. Uh, this October 13th, and so they're going to be getting started on work on uh potentially a draft ordinance to come back to council for consideration. We did not have a new update on the guardrails.
I can, I can actually offer additional information on small cell five G, like on August 12th, 2020, a three judge panel of the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit um voted on the issues related to the FCC's declaratory order. Um, they upheld all of the FCC's uh declaratory order except the aesthetic uh piece. So um cities are encouraged, if they're not doing legislation right now, to immediately start doing legislation and get it done because with the ruling coming down, basically unless they decide to appeal to the en banc, which is basically the entire Ninth Circuit. Um, or certiorari to the Supreme Court, we're not going to see much more movement legally on this issue, which means cities are going to have to play within the FCC's declaratory rulings. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, and I'll just double check. Uh, Director Fisher, is there any different information on the guardrails? I think we were still trying to get into CID.
Yeah, that's correct. And I, and I will be talking with them here shortly. Uh, once, once water season is over, we'll sit down and and take a look. Then they roll into their construction season. So I need to touch base with them anyway. And now that we have, we have the survey done up on, up on Crescent for those trees. So now we have a better understanding of where the right of way is. Um, which definitely helps um in trying to incorporate guardrails there because there really isn't much of a shoulder um on the, on the side of the road. So um now that we know where the right of way is at, that will definitely help us with planning and design uh for that guardrail.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to share with council, the county on the next item had finally released the 2020 point in time count, uh homeless count. That report has been made available online. Um, and I've been in the conversation with our planning supervisor. There's quite a lot of dense information and data in that report. Um, and so he's going to be following up with Esther Magasas, who is the county's human resources, excuse me, human services director, uh, and see if we can't get a little more information on that. So well, whoops, our screen went away. There we go.
I opened the link that you shared.
Oh, okay. Um, but yes, there is a link in that embedded in that for council. Um, and then finally, the fire department residency program. Uh, at this point, uh, we're trying to meet the requirements for soliciting construction grants. Construction firms are reporting they're very busy right now, trying to get things squared away before uh winter. Um, so chiefs continuing to try to bird dog that and get, get our quotes in and uh be able to make the space improvements that we need in order to host the residency program. And those are the updates we have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, council members, any additional um items for the council request status report? Okay, here we go. We'll move on to our next agenda item. Um, other reports, announcements, and questions by council. Mr. City Manager?
Oh, from council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll go down the list and ask councilors if they have a reports, announcements, or questions. Uh, we'll start with Counselor Farmer.
I do. Um, I noticed on the news tonight that uh the Yakima Health District went ahead and authorized schools to open under certain conditions. Uh, churches are now open under certain conditions. Uh, restaurants are now open under certain conditions. Can we contact the Yakima Health District and ask if we can get some exception? If we follow the guidelines of distancing and masks and start holding council meetings uh live?
We'll follow up with them on that.
Hey, Counselor Restucci? I'm sorry. Do you have additional questions or comments? Uh, Counselor Farmer?
That was it.
Thank you. Counselor Restucci?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have one item for all of council, just so you're aware. Um, I have applied for the uh Norm Childers seat for the County Commission District Three seat. I just want to let council be aware of that.
Thank you. Counselor Henry?
Uh, none for me. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Stremler?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Counselor Hicks?
Uh, just can we uh see about what do we cost or what do we have to be modified to get the dog catcher in the area more? And a couple of concerns I had relayed to me is uh we've had problems with dogs pecking before around here, people with trucks with cages. There's no markings on his vehicle.
Oh, okay.
That, that's it for me.
Okay, Counselor Burisma?
I have nothing for this at this time.
Thank you, and I don't have nothing either, so. Move on to our next. Yes, sir.
If I may, I can respond just briefly to Counselor Hicks. I, I just wanted to let council know that uh at my request, Chief Escalera has reached out to the Director of the Yakima Health, Yakima Humane Society. Um, and we are working on setting up a conversation with them about the levels of service and options for council to consider. Uh, if if council chooses to renew the contract with them uh for different uh, for different levels of service. So we're working on getting that information for council and hope to have that uh here soon as you move forward with your budget deliberations.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next agenda items will be our upcoming council meetings. Mr. City Manager?
All right. Um, this first item, uh, we're gonna uh, we're gonna maybe adapt a little bit, we'll see, as I think Director Alba's had to go ahead and and uh check out of the meeting this evening. As I mentioned, uh, she suffered an injury over the weekend. Uh, she will be going into surgery tomorrow for that. And uh is expected to be out of the office uh for a few weeks as a result. She does have her laptop at home, is hoping to be able to resume working at least uh on a limited basis, uh, hopefully fairly soon. But it does mean that our preparations for the October 5th workshop, which were going to be almost entirely Elizabeth's uh uh materials. We're going to be working to try to get those still put together for you. The first item was going to be an update on where we're at year to date, third quarter for budget. I'll be working with financial supervisor and Elizabeth to try to still get that ready for you. Uh, we'd also request council's feedback on your priorities for budget enhancement requests. Still waiting to get some of those back. Please try to get those back as soon as possible so that we can have that uh uh report out on that to you. Um, and then uh we're also aiming to just provide an update on the current forecasted uh 2021 budget revenue. So the budget workshop may be uh not quite up to Elizabeth's fine standards. But we're wishing her well and a speedy recovery and um we'll, we'll certainly do our best to make sure that you have uh good information for that. October 12th, uh, we have potentially budget amendment. Uh, the next budget amendment would normally be our third quarter budget amendment. We also will have a discussion of ad valorem taxes, the, the public hearing on that. That's a statutory driven deadline. And then we're uh looking to bring forward the Midvale Road Project Transportation Improvement Board Funding Commitment. This was the project that was dependent on the passage of the uh sales and use tax increase. We're also uh just getting back from final review from the attorneys, uh, the draft accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And so those should be ready at that time. And as we've shared before, most of the rest of the calendar year will be focused on the various required steps under the budget process. So I'll go into a lot of detail here, but uh we've got a, a full set of meetings and we're getting down to the end of the year, meaning two regular October meetings, two regular November meetings, one regular December meetings. We have five meetings to go as currently scheduled uh in this calendar year. So happy holidays. Um, they're already putting Christmas decorations out in some of the stores. Um, with that, that's our upcoming agenda.
Thank you, City Manager, and um council members, any questions or comments on the agenda item for the next few meetings? Okay, uh, here we go. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is items from city manager and department heads.
Right. Thank you. Actually, I'll, I'll continue on the theme, talking about uh COVID-19, and that'll be my only update for, for this evening. For council's awareness, as of tonight, Yakima County has reported 12,226 COVID-19 cases and 233 deaths, which is unchanged for the last several days. We, we, we've held pretty steady there. Currently, we have just 11 county residents in the hospital, and although the state does, does deem the county, our numbers are still at the high risk level under the state framework, we have definitely been improving and improving. And as Counselor Farmer noted, the health district today outlined recommendations that could bring students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade back to campus for in-person learning as early as October 12th, if the case counts and hospitalization rates hold steady. Then, no less than three weeks later, hybrid learning for students in grades six through eight could begin. Uh, and that would be early November. And then um right around Thanksgiving is when they anticipate potentially grades nine through 12 uh resuming hybrid learning. Um, again, the health district emphasized that these recommendations depend on stable case counts and as well as requiring the schools to follow a number of added safety requirements. The final decisions on where, or excuse me, on how or uh under what circumstances to uh resume any in-person instruction resides still with the local school board, which I understand uh Superintendent McKay and the school board are holding a special meeting uh tomorrow evening to solicit community uh input on, on, on those plans. I am also hearing uh through conversations with the Association of Washington Cities and, and some of our uh legislative peers. The state legislature at this time is actually preparing for a likely virtual legislative session. It's not clear to what extent they will convene in person in January. They are making plans for adjusting committee schedules and timetables to avoid the, the overlap that is most of us are most familiar with during the legislative session, where you may have three to five different committees in each chamber, all meeting simultaneously. Uh, that uh, that turns out to uh really complicate the bandwidth for uh their systems and technology. So they're trying to figure out how to do this, but it's, it's sounding like at this point, the legislature may not convene in person. Or if it does, it'll be a very limited in-person uh session with a significant virtual component. Unfortunately, I also want to, or need to share, you know, and council's aware of this, but we did have, uh, we have had our third incident of uh an employee from the city contracting COVID-19. This employee is one assigned at City Hall. They tested positive last week. Uh, they appear to have contracted it from a household member, and in just a week's time, all six household members have become ill. And just to kind of uh contextualize this, as, as part of our COVID-19 service adjustments, this, this employee had been mainly working remotely with limited staff contact. Um, we did have our custodial services, even so, perform a full sanitizing of City Hall last Thursday evening. I want to commend staff at City Hall. They've been very diligent in observing our masking and distancing protocols, so we are very optimistic. There's been no workplace transmission of COVID-19. And as I mentioned, this is our third uh instance of this. First, as uh council will recall, was the very large outbreak at our police department in May, which affected nearly a quarter of that department. Um, and the second involved uh two dispatchers in August. Fortunately, all of those personnel recovered and have returned to work, and our hopes are for a similar outcome in this case as well. Recently, YVCOG uh was having a discussion, YVCOG members were, sorry, Yakima Valley Conference of Government, or YVCOG members were having a discussion around um some of the COVID-19 reopening uh strategies. Several members of YVCOG have been getting questions about when or how can we reopen all the way? If masks are working, why not reopen now? Why are there still limits on how long groups can gather or how many people can gather in person? In response, on Friday, the county's health officer uh shared uh some specific remarks. This is from Dr. Teresa Iverson. This was her response as to why, why they are not allowing more opening faster, even if masks are working. So um kind of quote from her remarks, masks dramatically reduce potential transmission from infected individuals, and we only need review our case counts before and after the mask directive in order for evidence of that. But even the N95 masks are only ninety-five percent, excuse me, ninety, N95 masks are only ninety-five percent effective at filtering small particulates such as fine respiratory droplets with COVID-19 virus from infected individuals. Even if we had an endless supply of N95 masks to fit every individual in the county, 5% of respiratory droplets would go potentially unfiltered, and we would still see some COVID cases. There's also wide variation in the effectiveness across types of face coverings, covering such as surgical masks versus cloth masks versus bandanas or scars. And of course, how people wear those face coverings, such as allowing to slip the nose. That's why when health investigates cases, they are still cautious and consider people within six feet or within six feet for 15 minutes or more with masks as close contacts. Other factors relating to transmission include proximity to an infected individual, hence the social distancing recommendations. Duration of exposure, 15 minutes or less is safest. Ventilation of the space outside is better than inside, and large open spaces are better than small ones if indoors. The activity of the individuals, such as talking, singing, shouting, coughing, or sneezing. All of it boils down to how much virus you might be exposed to. Less is better. Those were the remarks Dr. Iverson shared with the uh some of the elected officials and administrators through YVCOG, and so I just wanted to pass that along for council's awareness as well, uh, and for the public's awareness. That can, that wraps up her remarks and, and my remarks, and I'll pass it along to uh city staff. Let's start, uh, let's see, I'm trying to see who's live and unmuted. Uh, let's start with Chief Anderson.
Uh, this is Chief Anderson. Uh, good evening. I don't, I don't have anything new other than the engine. That was my big topic tonight, and I just want to thank you, thank the council again for their approval of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Chief Escalera.
Uh, enough for me, other than uh we're getting close to receiving an answer when we can get our, our involved staff from the, from the shooting a couple of weeks ago back into circulation. So uh hopefully that will come about very soon. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Can I, I have, I'd like to ask Chief Escalera a question. Chief, I was contacted by Kirk Ellis today. Um, did he speak with you also?
No, I did not.
Okay, so council, so you're aware, um, I've been asked to be your deposition representative in regards to Okay, so council, so you're aware, um, I've been asked to be your deposition uh, representative in regards to the um, uh, the crime pre-rental housing ordinance lawsuit. Um, and the reason being is because I was the mayor at the time. I helped the legislation get through the council, and so I'm gonna be deposed in that lawsuit. Um, chief, I understand that you're gonna be deposed as well as the administrative side. I'm gonna be deposed on the legislative side.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up, and I wanted council to be aware of it.
Okay, uh, Public Works Director Fisher?
I mean, I got a, I got a couple of quick updates. Um, some of you may notice, we, we do have orange paint um, in some of the sidewalk areas downtown. Um, trying to mark some of the high spots um, for, as far as tripping hazards, and it also serves, uh, those are gonna be areas that we're gonna start removing sidewalk. Um, might not do it this, this fall, but we, um, it just depends on if the weather holds up. Uh, but we want to get some of the tree stumps um, out of the downtown. It's really the, uh, really my, my biggest focus, because they're, they're, they're trip hazards. So, um, guys are really focusing on that. Uh, one other update, I, I did attend the drive um, transact um, this past week, and there was one very interesting update from from Washdaw, which I thought was important to share with, with everybody, is that there's, you know, with COVID going on, there's, there's a big hiring freeze at Washdaw. And, and normally they, they hire um, this time of year, you know, forty or fifty snowplow drivers. And so they chose not to do that. Um, so snow removal will be, could potentially be a problem this year um, on the interstates. So I just thought that was um, something we, we should all be aware of when we, you know, venture out into the winter conditions this year, that uh, it's not gonna be like it has been in the past, which has been nice and clear and, you know, wet for the most part. Um, Washington doesn't have standing job of, of keeping the roads clear, and um, I think it's gonna be a challenge for us this year. So, um, other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you for that. That, that's very interesting. Um, Clerk Renteria?
Just reminding people to um, complete the census. Sunnyside has a self-response rate of fifty-three point nine, which isn't much of an increase from the last time I provided an update, but um, get those censuses get those census responses in these next few days.
Yes. And if I recall correctly from news reports, there was a, a court ruling, um, I believe it's under appeal, but I, there was a court ruling um, extending the period of the count uh, from the end of September through October, but um, yeah, I think it's still being litigated. So, uh, yeah, sooner is better and encourage folks to get the, get their census results in.
The last that I had heard was October fifth, but um, it could change, could have changed.
Okay, that concludes the staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, so that concludes our, our meeting. Um, there being no further business to come before council, and without objection, I adjourned this meeting at uh, eight oh three P M. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, everyone.
Hello.